... I'm glad we're the leaders of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mayor Hassler, Alderman Smith, Alderman Johnson, Alderman Donovan, Alderman Jokers, Alderman Raines, Alderman Jones, Alderman Prince, Alderman Wolfen. Mayor, we have a forum.
Thank you very much. For approval of the agenda?
With approval.
Second?
One paper takes us down to our city administrator's report.
The, uh, it's at the levee still working and was in time and it still is. Uh, water's going down. I talked to them today, you know, the volunteers who are walking, uh, they're gonna discontinue that when the water level at the Chester gauge drops to forty feet. The current predictions are that would be Thursday afternoon of next week. So, uh, things are looking well. They reported that, you've heard about the little problems that they've had with some sand, well, not water boils, not so much sand boils. Uh, none of that got any worse. Several of them have gotten better since they were first looked at, so everything, everything is under control.
I'd like to add to that, though, uh, after this event is over, uh, we need to do, I would like to, and I'm gonna have a meeting, uh, to talk about some lessons learned here because there was a lot of, there's always a lot of questions, especially if you're living in the protection of that levee. Well, do I need to, what do I need to do? You know, and then I raise a question, well, what, what would happen if the levee were to, we'd have a, a major event there? Well, how would we get a hold of people? And so, when you're having a flood event, you don't wanna really talk about that and deal with it right then because you put people in panic mode. But I think from this flood event forward, we're gonna do some things. When that river hits a certain gauge or stage, we're gonna get some information out to some people that live within the, in the floodplain of that that's protecting them from that levee, just so there's some good, clear communication as we go forward. And, uh, so we're, I talked to Martin about that. We'll have several people and y'all will be welcome to do, to be a part of that if you'd like, but, uh, we just wanna do more of that and be a better proactive on some things with that.
So Paul, in retrospect, how many feet of water was actually up against that levee?
The levee reached, it was, uh, the river stage reached, I think it was forty-six-point-nine-three-feet.
That's at the Chester gauge, just not at the levee.
No, but I mean, the base of the levee, you know, actually water up on that levee, just...
I, I really don't know when the water hits the base of that. Garrett, you know when the water hits? What time, when do you close the railroad tracks?
Our first floodgate's thirty-five feet.
Okay, so the first...
State representative.
Yeah, so we close the floodgate, so we're in that floodgate, so at thirty-five feet, so you do the math there, you know? So there's eleven and a half feet of water that was, or more, holding back behind that levee. So, okay, Martin.
Okay, so I received a response from the Corps of Engineers relative to your desire to not do any more with them. Uh, we distributed at your table before the meeting, the email response I got. Uh, in essence, he, uh, is saying that they will, we, fast, tell them to proceed, they will officially close out the project, revise the general reevaluation report, and state that the city does not support the recommendation and therefore no further action is recommended. I think that's consistent with what we said. Um, and he said, uh, further that they will, um, let us know what any close outs, outsteps are necessary and that they wanna do a review to ensure that the cost sharing has, uh, been properly accounted for. We're not sending them any more money. Uh, the last time we said, "How much is it gonna cost to finish this?" They said seventeen thousand, whatever it was. We sent it to them and that's it. That's it. So, um, Chadwell Lane design is complete. Uh, all the easements were secured as reported to you before. Uh, the plans are on the street for bidding and the bid opening is June the nineteenth. So, at your next meeting, I should be able to tell you what that's gonna cost and we can make some decisions about, uh, whether or not you wanna do additional work on Chadwell Lane, down to the bridge, as we talked about at the, at the work session, and, uh, based on the unit costs.
As far as they just paving area that's paved now and, uh, that gravel on the side is...
They're gonna change the elevation of Chadwell Lane at, at the highway and come off with less than ten percent slope and go past the pump house, valve house for the gas company and then just kinda, until it matches with the existing paving and then it's gonna stop. It's three hundred and something feet down the hill. Then the question is whether you wanna go ahead and overlay the remaining portion to the bridge. I haven't measured that. Jerry, Gary thinks yes, yes.
Yeah, down at the bottom next to the bridge is always bad.
Yeah.
Part that's drained, the, the, the water, no matter what we do, the water ends up kinda...
Coming across the road.
Coming across the road.
Need to get that little swag out of there, too. Get that one near the bridge, yeah. What do we do? We advertise, forebids? There's no invitation of it, they're just, uh...
Well, I may known to the local contractors who always look at work that it's available in case they don't read the ad.
Right.
But we, uh, but we do advertise in the local paper. The, um, engineer puts it on Dodge reports, which is what contractors monitor in order to find out where public works projects are coming up. And, uh, then we notify our, our local contractors.
Do you know how much area on top is flat?
I'd have to look at the plans, but it's about, it's not gonna be perfectly flat.
Right.
Uh, but it, it's, I think a three-car, you know, thirty feet.
Paul Arnold said it's gonna be about the same as what they did on Watts Road next to Southbound Fuel. They raised that up a couple of years ago.
That'd be great. That's real nice.
Um, I, um, communicated with Piva. I haven't heard from him. Uh, he said, "Yeah, you haven't, but you're going to," and that's all. A citizen came in to pay their UTV, uh, permit fee and, uh, I think somebody else has had a conversation with a citizen or two. The county's permit is two years, ours is three years, and they're wondering if we can have a two-year, I mean, one year. If we can have a two-year permit to kinda match the county's program. Uh, I don't know why not.
I, I'm sorry, I've gotten several complaints lately about UTVs and so I don't feel like we should be going to the two years if we're having some issues.
Okay. That'd be a good time to talk about those.
Great.
Issues?
Uh, speed, noise, running stop signs, I mean, you name it. Especially downtown, yeah. Containers, yeah.
Oh, man.
Um, I've noticed no seatbelts. Kids, not, not in seatbelts especially, which is...
Especially in the historic district, and they had a huge, they had a huge run-through this weekend, or this past week, that really puts the people on edge and we got a lot of phone calls.
That put, that was 'cause of the, I believe that's 'cause of the Down Syndrome.
I understand. Yes, sir. But still, that put a lot of people on edge and, so, um, I agree, no more than one year.
Are we, so, I, I was reading the code on this. Can you remind me how long ago that ordinance was passed to allow them?
In eighteen.
It was in eighteen.
Oh, somewhere.
Okay. And the permitting is, there, new permits are issued in the month of January, so if they're renewing, you're supposed to renew in January. Do we know how many people renewed?
Oh, there's, I have to look and see how many.
How do we identify?
Order of magnitude.
Like tabs?
Two hundred.
Okay.
Do we give them tabs? I know how that works.
We give them those stickers.
I'm just curious, how many people went through the original process and paid their permit and got a sticker, but then kinda like dog licenses didn't come back?
The stickers are different colors, so you can, you can tell by the different years.
Okay.
But I mean, did we monitor all the ones that went the first year, went back the second years, I think what you're asking?
Pretty much.
We didn't monitor. I mean, we can look and see how many of them are back that, you know, got a permit the year before and haven't got another permit. Is that kinda what you're...
Yeah.
Okay.
I don't know, I'm just kinda wondering, though, what's the permit gonna, I mean, is it gonna keep them from speeding?
That's what I'm saying. What are you doing?
It's a pretty cheap fine if you don't have a permit and at least then if they have a permit, they're aware of the regulations for the city, 'cause they're different from the county.
Maybe we should give them a, what those restrictions are and stuff also in writing each year, too, rather than just a little tag.
We do. We give them a copy of the ordinance and the regulations and stuff.
I guess I don't understand, what, what would the difference be of just keeping it at one year? What, what would be the benefits of, of keeping the permits at one year rather than moving them to two? I mean, if they're getting the permits and they are, so they know the, the regulations, they know the law, then they're, they're, if they're having these issues, they're openly not abiding to them, but I don't really see what the, what keeping it at one year solves, I guess, would be...
We don't have a permitting issue, we got an enforcement issue.
And that's pretty much, I mean, that...
Yeah, but I...
I mean, a permit's not gonna solve it. I mean, even if they don't have a permit, if you're not gonna enforce the permits...
Right.
I mean, we have an enforcement issue, not a permitting issue.
Right. I guess my, my, my other concern is that some of them are not permitted.
There again, that's an enforcement issue.
Right. Some people drive without their seatbelts on.
Yes, sir.
UTV or car. I mean, until you're doing something wrong, there's not a whole lot you can do.
Is there something that could be done to, that might be able to, to help out? Eric, is, I don't know if this would help, being your department or to, as far as trying to enforce these a little bit, I don't, I don't know how big the sticker is, I mean, I don't, I don't know if it's hard to see.
The sticker is not, is not terribly visible. Is there a specific area?
Eric, why don't you come to the microphone?
Yes.
We need him anyway.
Yeah, it's supposed to be on a certain area.
Is there a specific area that is, is problematic?
I've, I've gotten complaints from downtown, residents downtown. When I walk my dogs, I notice it and I, well, that's mostly in the evenings when we walk the dogs. They wake me up sometimes.
Business owners.
I mean, they come past my street and wake me up. But I mean, the general comments I've gotten are from people who live or work downtown and even somebody in St. Jude today, who we're chatting and mentioned now, that they're going and their kids are playing outside.
Yeah. Okay. Well, we will, I mean, certainly no different than cars, if our guys are seeing anybody that, that are breaking the law in that, you know, the seatbelts is, is not necessarily a primary offense with the, with the exception of children. You know, children under, visibly under sixteen, uh, is a, is a primary offense and, and a reason for a stop. Uh, so we'll certainly step up enforcement on that. The stickers are not, are not terribly visible, um, so typically when we see them at gas stations or, you know, where, where they're congregating, we'll get an opportunity to kind of inspect and make sure that, that they're in compliance there. Um, but we haven't, so, so far as I know, we haven't actually initiated any, any traffic stops solely to, to inspect for, for stickers, so...
Sure. But that's something that would, would get checked.
Yes.
They would be issued a citation if they don't have a permit.
Yes, yes.
Garrett, what do you do? When you get a complaint, do you call?
I come here and talk about it tonight.
And Martin, Martin brought it up this week, I guess he, you had addressed a concern to him and he contacted us about that, so, um, you know, so we certainly pass that along and, and we'll be more vigilant on that. You know, it's, it's like, like anything else, you know, there's the people that are in favor of it are gonna be in favor of it and the people that are against it are gonna be against it and, you know, we just try to make sure everybody's doing what they're supposed to be doing and, um, you know, like I said, it, it was brought up initially when we were doing golf carts to do the UTVs and at that time they decided for those, for those very reasons not to, uh, allow the UTVs, you know, the, the speed capability and, and the noise and, and honestly, those two are gonna go hand in hand. The faster they're going, the louder they're gonna get, so, um, you know, that's certainly something that we'll, we'll keep our guys on top of and make sure they're checking those.
Well, I've been downtown, too, where I've seen kids in their cars, man, squeal their tires from Washington Street, pass the bridge and then open it up like that, you know?
Yeah.
Can't be everywhere that you're gonna have it, you just, people are gonna...
Is there anything that you would recommend that could be done differently or you think that's, the way we're doing it's fairly solid or...
On a bigger tag?
No, like a bigger tag or, yeah, that's...
Yeah, bigger tag.
We, we could look at that.
And charge them more?
Probably, yeah, the problem, we, we tried initially to, to make it kind of a uniform location as far to where, as far as where to put the tag, but not every UTV is made the same or have, have, have the same, uh, fenders or whatever.
I think it's enforcement more than anything.
Right.
I understand having the tag, but if we got a problem with them racing or going too fast up and down the street, they're off.
There definitely was a higher concentration this weekend in town and stuff and there was a lot more speeding and I wondered what was in the coolers and stuff.
Now, you, you approved for the participants in the Down Syndrome motorcade, they didn't have to have permits, or they had to be participants, they had to have participation marker on their...
But I don't think we approved open containers.
No.
And we didn't do a very good job of letting people know. I mean, they weren't, they weren't advertising their route, um, and I, I think next year maybe for that event, we need to speak with them, find out the route and try and let folks know that we're living on the route because, I mean, I did get a lot of complaints on Saturday, but I've also gotten a lot of general complaint. And people just didn't know that's what was going on.
There were routes marked on sixty-one and stuff, but I don't know if they had the whole, just where they crossed and stuff.
Yeah, they had some signage, but, I mean, nobody knew if they were gonna go through.
But they were just little small signs, not very big. Just says UTVs.
Well, I think that's something we can address with Down Syndrome people and stuff and just saying there was a lot of unhappy people with their participants and stuff and maybe they can put out more of a stern warning.
Or, or I think rapid information, say, in part of the public city.
Right.
Maybe reroute them hell down town?
Which should have never, should have been coming through, especially...
Previous year...
During the French festival, yeah. That was really disruptive with the French tourists.
Previous year wasn't an issue.
No, we didn't have another...
Not a single complaint the previous year.
Well, I think the route was because of high water, the routes were, they had to scramble to get it...
They're usually not on the same weekend.
Right.
They had to move to Down Syndrome because of Special Olympics, so they wound up on the same weekend.
Well, we just, we, we dropped them all, we dropped that, too. We did, you know, whatever, so...
Well, that's 'cause we didn't have a problem the year before.
Right.
We didn't have as much going on either.
Right.
There wasn't as many UTVs a year before as there was like this year.
Oh, yeah, I think Chip said there was like close to three hundred.
Right.
Do we require insurance, proof of insurance on when they get a permit?
Yes.
Insurance and, and tax receipt that they're paying their tax bill.
It's every, every year.
And, and that, again, was, I guess, the reason for the, uh, the request initially to move that to two years, just because it's, it is requiring the, the, uh, insurance and, and taxes already and that's what the, the county was doing, but...
Well, I would propose that we leave it at one year, at least, and then maybe bring it up again in January or December when you're getting close to your renewal period so that we could at least make it two years at the renewal month.
I concur and I also like the idea of reworking these, the route, especially since we're gonna be a national park, we are a national park now. I don't know if we wanna have UTVs and all that going, running around the historic district.
You mean on the organized event?
Uh, yes. I'd like to see it not at all, to be honest, but yes, that was a bit ridiculous, to be honest.
So it wasn't a particular route in town?
Well, they had a, they had a set route, which was not advertised, so folks who lived on the route weren't aware of what was going on. And then after they went back to the KC Hall, a lot of them came downtown and rode around and went like to Sarah's Ice Cream and wherever else in town, since they were already in town.
Which is a good thing.
Which is what?
That's a good thing.
It is a good thing.
But not if they're making noise and speak.
Right.
Right.
Other lobby, like, don't have to be speaking loud.
It's, it's a one-day event. I mean, I, I certainly see that the, the open container situation is, um, it's terrible. I mean, I, I agree with that there, but I mean, for this to be a one-time event, I don't know if it really draws this much concern or, I don't know if it's necessary. I think we're kinda blowing this out of proportion for this one event.
But boy, I have, I have them coming down my street almost every night.
Well, I mean, me, too.
You know, they're loud.
Of course, I live right on sixty-one.
Yeah.
And me, too. And I, I, I see, I see your concern, for sure. I, I just don't agree.
Which we solved that with an enforcement issue, not a, not permitting.
Well, you can't keep them off the streets, we decided they can run.
If they're not acting properly.
Well, I mean, they don't have the speed for them to be loud, I think they...
Everything that's going on with these, we've done with vehicles as well. There's Jeeps that are louder than UTVs, there's cars that have, I've friends that have cars that are much louder than these UTVs. I, I guess that's what I'm getting at, is, is it being abused? Certainly. Um, and, and enforcement could, you know, I, I don't know if there's really anything that could be done, you can't be everywhere twenty-four seven, but there, I've seen this all happening with vehicles, you know? It, it just doesn't change anything from a car to a UTV for, and it to be blown out of this proportion. I, I think it's a little bit absurd. Uh, I don't see a problem with the two years myself, um, but I mean, I, I, I'm fine if they want it to, you know, re, you know, renewal time, I mean, that's, that's fine.
Can I just move forward?
Very good. Thanks, Eric. So we opened bids on the last element of the water tower, which is fencing, and more fence was a little bitter. Uh, they've been notified. Corey, do you know when they intend to start?
Uh, do not, Martin.
Okay.
Steve, you haven't talked yet.
Right. A warning contract.
Yeah, so you can't start till it's too...
Couple of years ago, I attended meetings with Stronger Economies Together group that was putting together an economic level plan for the region. Uh, then I kinda dropped back. Sandra's been staying active with them. And I attended a meeting, it was actually the County Southeast, County, Missouri County Commissioners meeting, uh, where this, members of this group convened and they're hiring a website developer to put together a website for the harness. This whole process is continuing. Their goal is to territory and make available information on industrial sites. There's been a lot of work on identifying industrial sites in the southeast region, but not all southeast region, but counties around St. Francis and St. Genevieve, Mary County. And that site is, is, is in, uh, St. Genevieve County, so, uh, I'm, I'm encouraged by the amount of work that's going into that and hopefully it will not tear through.
Where is that site?
Old Road, uh, just, just, uh, west of Interstate fifty-five.
Okay.
Um, definitely a report on the, I think that's this place, a community television meeting, not really, a lot happened there, I don't think. Brian, do you?
Uh, not really. We did have our, um, the ending of our fifty-fifty RAP one fundraiser and, uh, stuff like that. We were, had a pretty good turnout for the Audubon's, uh, community event for us, it was actually a great turnout and, uh, so we were very pleased to see the overwhelming support there. Uh, we had a lot of fifty-fifty tickets, uh, handed out and, uh, I'm trying to think as, Kayden Mueller, I believe, is, was the, the winner and the recipient of the fifty-fifty drawing, which they donated about half of that back, so we're very thankful for as well and, but, oh, everything rolling smooth. Good fundraiser.
Is that a seventy-five, twenty-five drawing?
It ended up being about seventy-five, twenty-five, exactly. We were very, very thankful, great turnout. It was a great night, uh, the whole board was, was, you know, had, had a lot of pep in our step that night. It was great, so, thank everybody for, for the participation.
There's an ongoing lawsuit for, uh, property damages as a result of a sewer back-up, which, uh, generally in the state of Missouri, unless it's caused by the city or the utilities' negligence, there's no liability for that. Apparently, uh, they have a lawyer who's going to take the case and, and proceed with it. Uh, we, our insurance company was defending us, we paid our deductible and the insurance company, the lawyer sued Alliance, uh, and so Alliance was joined in the suit and then our insurance company and the, our insurance company lawyer and the Alliance Insurance Company lawyer decided to let the Alliance lawyer handle the case. All this comes down to me having to spend a day in Farmington doing mediation for something in which we don't really have any skin in the game anymore. But they won't be there, it's against the kind of city, it was a co-defendant, I'm gonna be there and I'll let you know what happens. The, the point I made to the lawyer, while there's no financial consequence for the city as a result of this, because we've already satisfied our financial obligation with the insurance company. We can't know everything about the condition of all of our pipes underground unless something happens. We have a routine inspection process, we make sure we monitor things, but there are, sometimes things happen that you didn't have full warning, you didn't know about. And I think it's important that the city, that the defendant's position on this and not be, accept liability for something that wasn't a result of our negligence or non-action. Uh, if we know about something and we fail to take care of it, that's on us. Uh, if we don't know about it and we fix it when it broke, then we did our job and, uh, I wanna, I wanna convey that message, which is one of the reasons why I intend to be at the mediation. Uh, then with the county regarding, uh, the court transfer schedule and, and with the collector regarding special tax bills, as a result of that meeting, uh, there were a series of questions. There were, she asked me, I asked her to put those questions in writing, I'm waiting for those questions to come in writing. Uh, some of them will require a, uh, legal opinion, Mark's been made aware of it, and, uh, when, when I get those questions, I'll forward the ones I, the one I answer to him and he can answer them. Uh, we had a meeting here with the, uh, ongoing story of the building renovations, uh, Bob and Jimmy were on a committee, uh, you wanna wait to the committee discussions to discuss that, talk about that, because there's a lot for you to do that. Uh, and then, uh, I went to the Community Services Foundation meeting, the big push right now is, um, making sure we survive the mosquito season. Uh, the health department has made available to us, uh, herbicide and materials to give to the staff, the, and, uh, we're grateful to them for that and Gary's placed his order and those will, those will be coming in. Any questions?
No, I have two things I'd like to comment. Paul, did you meet with Highway Department?
Yes, yes, I did. Uh, myself, David and Steve.
So that's the day I had my...
Yeah, yeah, that went really well and David's come back here with Brian Openfoos, so, seems like she was happy with the progress, so there's gonna be some, there's things that'll work. It's gonna take a little while, but there's things that'll work.
I was a little disappointed, none of the Alderman were notified of what the lion kill was done this weekend. Uh, running up and down St. Mary's Road, I realize there's no weight limits on that road, but they should have notified us that something was going on, especially with everything else that was going on in town. That's all I wanna say.
And I, and I went down and expressed that when I found out about it, talked to Oliver, who was in charge of that operation and, uh...
You know, and I wrote down with you and looked at the operation.
Yeah, we looked at the operation, so, that was my bigger concern, is the traffic, you know, which didn't amount with, with the traffic as far as their trucks loading that barge is, taking them every two hours to get a truck loaded, so there's not a lot of truck traffic on the road, but...
But, you know, when we came across, it was a lady with a, one child in a stroller and a little kid.
Yeah, there's a lot of people use that road.
Yeah.
For, for, for exercise, so...
'Cause the road is blocked, is...
There's no pedestrian way, you're, you're walking in the street.
Well, and then it's covered up with brush.
It's closed the regular traffic, right?
Well, that's one of the things we're gonna talk about at this meeting, that the mayor, we, we don't have the authority to close that road.
That's not our road, to begin with.
Right. They can put a sign up, but if somebody goes around the sign, the police can go talk to them and ask them to leave, but they haven't violated an ordinance.
to them and ask them to leave, but they haven't violated an ordinance. And so we're gonna talk about maybe that'd be something we want to consider adopting.
At that meeting, that's one of the lessons learned. We're talking about the levee road. When the river got up, we wanted to close it to, for, for traffic on the road. You just got people sightseeing, and it's, really, it's a taxpayer levy, you know, so, but there's a safety concern when the river gets up too. So we got.
Now, along the lines of the St. Mary's Road load limit, I did inquire of Cochran, who's working for the city in other capacities, what do it cost to analyze that road? I mean, right now, I mean, if you establish a load limit, it needs to be based on some factual basis, not just.
Right.
I want it to be whatever you want it to be. There's really no test. I mean, they could come out and drill some core samples, figure out the thickness of the asphalt and the depth of the base and what the sub-bass is made of. And they could say, so, at this location, we're pretty sure it would withstand, you know, 80,000 pounds. And then they could do representative samples throughout. They won't guarantee the results, because it can only speak for the core they took.
Right.
But we figured to do a representative sample, core sample of St. Mary's Road to kind of establish some basis for a weight limit, if you choose you want to do that at some point, would cost about $5,000. Three to five.
And this is, this is a limited event, too. Once the river goes back down, there'll be loading either at the port or, but we, we need to be, we probably won't be, but somebody needs to be mindful, is that port, if it develops, if that marina gets sold and develops into a port, well, there's gotta be access and it's gonna come through the city. So then I would be really concerned. If it was a, if this was something they were gonna do for a long time, I would, there would be, have to be some more. But right now, at short term, I would think by, I would think by the middle of July, they'll be, they'll be out of there, you know, so.
One more thing, getting back to the TV. I realize where you're going with addressing me there. I apologize. I was excited about the fundraiser. But in regards to what we discussed as far as the budget side of things and being paid for advertisement for KSGM, that was also discussed. And basically, it's kind of what I said before, essentially the same thing as what I said before. Normally, and this is according to, to some folks on the board, that we would actually have to pay KSGM for them to stream their, their stuff. So basically, it's a wash. We stream their stuff for content, and they get allowed to use their advertisers on our avenue. And that's essentially what it is. The alternative to that is if we decided we did not want to allow that, it would just be, we wouldn't really have an alternative, because the TV station doesn't have the funding to go out and try to purchase somebody's content to stream on our, on our airwaves, on our network. So that's kind of where we're at. I think I hit on all avenues, for the most part.
So whose guidelines are those that says we have to pay them?
Well, I don't, I don't know. That's what I was told.
You say "we." What do you, what question?
He's, he's just talking about like norm, how it was brought up that normally we would pay them to.
Oh, whether, with, they have to pay, when you say "we."
The TV.
You're talking about TV station.
Yeah. Right. I, I don't know. I don't know that answer.
Any other questions? Martin's reports, Don. I'd like to back up to personal appearance. Dale Wright's in the building now. Would you like to address the board?
Cool.
Come up and state your name.
You're never supposed to miss an opportunity.
That's right. That's right.
Well, I'm still learning how to be a politician here.
That's right.
Yes, my name is Dale Wright, State Representative, represent St. Jen County. And I'm delighted to get to be at the meeting tonight. Been in session up in Jefferson City. And so I'm gonna be down here as much as I can, just to learn. I've learned a lot tonight, just listening, and I want to do more. I've got to come to some of the commissioners' meetings. So I appreciate that. I guess maybe a couple of things, and I'm sure you all are aware of it, but in the state budget, we do have some money set aside for roads and bridges, obviously. And some of that will be matching funds. So if you have roads or bridges or something that needs to be addressed, there's some matching funds up to the point of $50 million for the state set aside for that. So I'm sure you all already looked into that, and that, that'll be explained a little more as the budget comes out in more defined fashion. Another thing, I've been coming also to the regional planning commissions, and I was assigned the last time to check into used tire disposal. And I don't know if that's a real challenge inside the city here, but the state evidently at one time had a tire grinding machine, and that has since broken. And so it's so expensive to repair and replace, that they're not replacing that. But they do have in place a program where they've partnered with some tire disposal companies. The one that's probably the most applicable to us over here is a company called the Champlain Tire Disposal Corporation out of the Kansas City area, no, out of Kansas, southeast Kansas. And as long as you're on a major highway like Interstate 55, and there's access to, for these large trucks to come in, as long as you have a thousand tire minimum, they will come into the area. And generally, there is a three to four dollar a tire, a charge. However, if these are tires that are coming out of a ditch or ponds or creeks or whatever, the Department of Natural Resources will talk to you about paying for all of that. So, anyway, I just want you to be aware of that. And thanks for letting me join in on the meeting, and I appreciate the opportunity of serving you all. And it's an honor to represent everybody. And I have to tell you, the more I learn about St. Genevieve, the more impressed I am. Seems like every weekend there's some kind of an activity. And I live in Farmington, and I've told Farmington, you're about to be surpassed by Perryville and St. Genevieve on a lot of, on a lot of fronts. And I just want you to know, I appreciate the opportunity of working with all of you and representing you. So I'll take any questions and bless.
You have a question?
Yes, sir.
Is the county engaging, is the county engaging on this?
Tire.
Yeah, I think, I think it came up, we were there at that meeting, and again, it's a major issue in the whole region evidently. And Gary Nelson, I think, is Gary the chair of that part, part of the committee, I believe, that I?
He's certainly the most vocal person about the tire issue.
Okay. All right, yeah, Commissioner.
All the commissioners who attend that meeting have similar concerns about what to do with.
I got 50 tires. I don't know where to take them. What do you want me to bring to your office?
Go right ahead. I'm not there.
Oh, okay.
But anyway.
They're in a ditch over here. I cleaned them out of a ditch.
Yeah, the state program, I mean, I was in county government back when the state program was operating with that shredder. And they issued certificates, and so citizens could come get.
Yeah.
These certs, and they would take their tires in for disposal. And it was, it's quite a deal, I mean, and it worked. But, you know, it's funding. I mean, that was money the state was spending to keep our state clean, and that was good. But they couldn't afford to fix that machine, so it stopped.
Right. So this is kind of the next best thing, partnering with these other companies. And there needs to be some kind of a depot where you take your tires. And then, again, there's gotta be at least a thousand tire minimum before they'll come and pick those up. And just one more caveat, the, the companies who they've contracted with have the right of refusal, so they don't really have to if they don't want to. But they're in the business for collecting tires and reselling them, repurposing those as forest shredding material and so on. So hopefully, we can get them to come over here. So, any other questions? I'd be glad to do it. Otherwise, thank you for letting me.
Thank you, Dan.
Come into the meeting.
David, you're up next.
Hello, ladies and gentlemen. I think you have the report there. Just a few highlights. It talks about the next historic preservation meeting. We did have a good one last month, work session, talked about a lot of stuff, some stuff that's been coming up in the public here lately, and came to some agreements. So it was a good meeting. We will not have a meeting Monday. We don't have any applications to consider, and the commission is gonna put off any of the further work session subjects till July. On down to rental housing and advisory commission, it talks about waiting in response. I did hear from the Public Service Commission, Department of Manufactured Housing, so they're gonna try to get to a meeting in July. They are fairly busy. Actually, I think they're fairly small staff. I believe it's, you know, two or three people. So one of them is gonna try to get here in July. I'll update you when that happens. Flood plain management, mayor talked about it a little bit, but we're working on a database for folks that are in what would be a zone X protected by the levee, and we're gonna do some communication with them once things kind of calm down here and the water goes back down. That's really it on the sheet, but I wanted to add one additional thing. About six months back, we approved a special use permit for 1045 Westwood, if you remember. The planning and zoning suggested a six-month permit, but when I re-watched the meeting, what we discussed here was a six-month review, and that was approved. So as long as there's agreement that it was a review, I visited the site 16 total times in the past six months, 12 since it was open. No instances of any additional cars on the street, no additional complaints from the neighbors. In fact, I've had a positive comment from one of the neighbors. So as long as the board is in agreement, I will reissue that permit and this pass the six-month review.
Great.
Are you doing it for another six months or three years? I would say, who has issued a regular permit?
I don't think there's any precedence with this, so, yeah. I mean, my assumption would be six months was good, did the right things. If there's a future violation, we go down that path. Okay.
Next, David.
Thanks, sir.
Any other questions? Chief?
Yeah.
You're up.
Good evening, everybody. We should have a report in front of you. Don't have a whole lot on it. We did have a busy month last month. We had 30 calls. We usually average 15 to 17. Not really sure what the increase was all about, but just one of those flukes that goes, comes and goes. We're only at like nine or 10 for this month, so busy month, slack month. Probably the biggest news is we have three people that we have gone through background checks for. Since I turned in this on Monday, we also have a fourth person now, so we are doing real good on recruiting in the last month. The four people that have applied are being invited to our training meeting Monday night to see if it's gonna be something that will work for them. And so we plan to put them on within the next week or two. So we're filling some empty spots, and hopefully we can start getting rid of some people that aren't real active and getting a real active staff again.
See, age of people?
Actually, we've got a good variety this time. We've got one a little older that one of our aldermen knows. And we've got one in the 30s. I've got one that's gonna turn 18 in August, and I've got one that is 18 now. So we're really looking for the young guys, and we've got a two out of four on the young guys. So that's a positive for us. We asked them where they found out about it. All of our different medias are all working. One saw the ad in the paper, so thank you to the paper for that. The Facebook brought another one in, who we got a sign out in Union Hall parking lot. That worked for one of them too. So people are seeing it from different varieties, so everything we're doing is apparently working right now. Hopefully, we can keep it up. Also, I did not have one here, because I just got a phone call yesterday. ISO has called. We talked about that, that they will be coming in to re-rate us. And we're setting a late July, early August audit for that. I've been talking to the water department about it, and when they rate us, they rate us 50% of our grade on the fire department, 40% on water, and 10% on dispatch services. So we're gonna be working real close with water department here in the next month to make sure everything is, match up to speed as we can have it.
We can tell, we just built a new water tower.
Yeah. A big part of what ISO does is record keeping, too. And I've talked to Corey and Steve both about that. As they look at things like flow, flow tests on the hydrants and things like that, they want to make sure that everything's adequate. So our record keeping and their record keeping is gonna be a big part of the audit thing. And the last time we did this, when they came in, two times ago, we spent two days doing it. We had to actually go out and flow test hydrants and farm. Last time they came in, we handed them the records. In two and a half hours, we were done with what they could do here. They take it back to their office. Then in about three or four months, you get a result back from them.
Since we're talking about water, as you know, the water service was placed, the water tower is placed in service. And we went through a lot of discussion and cooperation with the county, coming with the way to meet their needs and benefit the citizens of St. Genevieve. And it was a pretty impressive effort on everyone's part, and gets completed, and you turn off the pumps, and you open the spigot, and nobody noticed.
[laughing]
It was a little de-clamant, but it's a good thing, and it's in service.
That's needed.
Yes.
Chief, I've been watching at the end of your reports with the NOD Spots program. I thought it was pretty significant that the courthouse doesn't have those installed yet. But are there any other significant buildings that you would like to see them installed, that they're not installed yet?
I would have to actually sit down and look at the buildings. We've got, the apartment apartments have them. And I'm talking with Gary, who's also on the Audubon Estates apartment complex. We're gonna try to get one in there. We'd like to see them, especially on the apartments. Not so much even for us, as to do medical assist. Whenever the ambulance gets there, if they can't get in, we can use our key to access it for them to get in. So ideally, all commercial buildings would have one, but the bigger buildings and the more high occupancy buildings would be the ones we would be shooting for first. We've talked to the schools several times. St. Jen says they have people there basically 24 hours a day, so it's not an issue. Been talking to guys like Felix and Dean Meyer, who are big Windfowl Catholic, but a lot of those guys have keys that are on our apartments, so that's not a big issue. But the hotels, apartments, and the bigger commercial buildings are ones we're really shooting for. And it's slowly growing, but we've used it a couple of times. And we did run into an incident last month where we had a local commercial building. In the old days, they used to give us keys for a lot of building, which is one of the reasons we wanted to get NOD Spots, get away from keeping their keys. That way it keeps with their building. And we had a fire alarm sound, and we couldn't get into the building. So the best thing we could do is call the contact numbers we had on file for our pre-plans, got no answer, and then we had to leave the building. We checked as best we could and left, and hoped that nothing was bad inside.
I guess where I'm getting at with that is, are you the one that's reaching out to these people to ask them to do it, or is that something that we should be doing here?
The way it was instituted was through the building inspections and permits for renovations and buildings. We do try to talk to people when we go out and do our pre-plans. Once a month, we go out and walk through buildings and suggest it. And we take one of the how-to-order forms with us, so they can see how to order them. And we have posted on Facebook, like Alderman requested. We're getting a few, but not as many as I'd like to see. We can definitely continue putting it on Facebook on a regular basis. The problem with a lot of that is a lot of the commercial occupancies don't bother to look at Facebook. So I don't know the best answer to that.
Well, a place like Audubon, would you have one on each apartment? Or would there be one, is there a master key?
Most of those places have master key. They actually do have a, somewhat of a system there. They have a box locked inside another room up there, but that door's locked. So if we could get a key to get into that door, that would access their key box, too. So most of those places have a master key. And if they don't, as long as we don't get a great big wad of them, we can keep 10 or 12 keys in there. That would do the different zones or however. We do have them on Robinwood.
Oh, do you?
Yeah, Robinwood's got us set up on there.
Kenny, I'd like to comment on a report you handed me earlier that I had asked you about. And I'd like to copy this and share it with all the rest of the aldermen, if that's okay.
Sure.
Just gave me some basic requirements of what is required to be a firefighter, not only risking your life and answering calls to all hours of the day or night, seven days a week. Rank a firefighter, required hours, 330 hours a year in all different capacities, training class time.
Yep. I gave it to him. And what I did, basically, he asked for a survey of the number of hours the average firefighter puts in. And I took him as probationary firefighter, which is the highest number of hours, because in your probation period or the first year, we required him to go to firefighter one and two, which is a 282-hour class. It's basically college level to bring up to state certification level. So the first year is an extreme year. But he asked for that, and I gave him all the information as far as the regular working meetings, the pre-plans and all that stuff. So he's got a copy of it.
It's just pretty amazing and stuff for what we give them and what we expect of them, you know. It's just a real eye-opener. I appreciate it. I'll make sure that everyone gets a copy of it and stuff.
That's great.
Every one of those guys needs to be thanked graciously many times.
Thanks. Any other questions?
Thank you, chief.
Eachy, come on up here.
Good evening, Gary.
We've been doing a lot of asphalt patching. We got some of the worst spots on Chadwell. I'm gonna try to skip through this and come back, but we did quite a bit of patching on Seager Lane the other day and some of Second Street. We did a big section in front of Legion Hall at Park and Rosier. That really took a lot of abuse, I think, when that road was paved. Been mowing and weeding, cleaned up tree limbs on city properties from past storms and got a lot of mulching finished. Went to the cemetery and leveled the graves. Some of them are still mounded up and planted grass. Cleaned out another culvert pipe on St. Mary's Road. Cleaned out another culvert pipe on St. Mary's Road. We did one on North Main, which has collapsed. It's in the plans for tomorrow to cut the street and replace the pipe. Filled sandbags to have on hand for if there's any problems with the levee. We hauled a bunch by boat with the Sheriff's Department and dropped them in the front side of the levee gates to try to slow the leak down, which we did a little bit, but not a whole lot. Been spraying weeds. Once the levee access road went underwater behind the brush site, we worked with the levee district and put some rock across the north tracks to have an access to the levee from that end. Put out signs and helped them all out on the levee. Did several downtown cleanups, set up tents.
Gary, do you know when the brush site's going to reopen for the public? Any idea?
Anywhere from two to four weeks.
Thank you, sir.
So with that in mind, I talked to Paul earlier.
That's right, yeah.
About a possibility of maybe doing open burning for another month, since people can't get down there.
We had it open until the end of, no, end of May.
End of May.
And then we closed it, so it's closed right now, so it's a possibility, you know, we want to do it for another month.
Another month, yeah.
From this point, or go to the end of July, from now to the end of July.
There's, you know, they put ponding water out in their fields to help with the pressure on some spots.
I'd like to recognize with consideration after that, because they could end up turning a little dry.
That's what, that's my only issue with that. It's, it's really, we've been fortunate because there's not, it's kind of dry, you know, on this for us, you know, so.
But we had enough rain to set ready.
Like to do that for 30 days. Just do it from this point for 30 days.
Thank you.
If I might, Mayor, whenever you do the open burning, can you please hit me on a notification list of that? I go around town and I see smoke and I never know if we've got open burning or not.
Well, the last time I did, because I asked you.
You're about to vote, so hang in.
Yeah, hang in. But that is, you're right.
Let me know so I can let my guys know so we know whether or not we're supposed to be looking out for it. Thank you.
So we, I believe, the ordinance says you can have open, the board can approve open burning twice a year, without you having the board being this regular in the fall. And though you've already done one this year.
Emergency situation.
I won't violate the ordinance. I want to think through that because I don't want to, because in the fall of the year, you've got people that are going to want them. Maybe we ought to just leave it just like it is and file the sticks up until they open up the brush site. I think we'll just do that.
Anything else?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Committee reports. Bob, you have been, I know you all met with, was it Mr. Donsey on the building here?
Yes, just kind of went over just some basic, you know, ideas and where we wanted to start. Of course, he's real busy right now and it'll probably be the middle of July before we hear back. Just talked about some different options and stuff. And one that came up, I talked to Eric about today, was in the back, back there, do we want to go eight or nine-foot ceilings? And Eric said eight was fine with him, so, you know, just as a, maybe spread our money a little further. But he's going to get some other ideas for us of what we can have and not have and for what amount of money.
Called it several times. Value engineering.
Yeah.
Right.
He's going to get back to us in four weeks.
Okay. And we'll probably, the way I understand it, this project might not even happen until this winter, which is good for him. It's going to be okay for us. I mean, that makes sense.
He also expressed the, you know, that we could do some of the demolition with our own people, you know, to help some cause also.
Gary's good at tearing stuff up. That'd be good. That'd be great.
He didn't exclude any of the police officers or anything.
I guarantee if I give these guys a hammer, they'd make short work of it.
Okay, thank you. I don't think we have any other, any public comments, so that takes us to the consent agenda.
Motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, that's going to take us to old business. This is the second reading of an ordinance, bill number 4284, an ordinance amending the City of St. Genevieve Code of Ordinances, Chapter 405, Zoning Regulations, Article 2, Definitions, Section 405.020, and Article 5, Supplementary and Special Uses and Regulations Except Before. We tabled that because David wasn't here and there were some questions. He handed you out, sent you all some amendments to it, so.
Before, this discussion needs to be stated, I think. We don't have a position, recommendation for or against this particular ordinance, so whatever you want to do or not do, don't worry about us. It's not our ordinance, it wasn't our recommendations.
I don't think it solves the problem, but.
Wait, which one are we on right now?
The parking thing. I think you.
I've heard nothing but negative on this.
She tabled it, doesn't she have to?
Do I have to make a motion to, well, no, because it's on the agenda.
We just didn't have a second reading.
Been tabled.
She tabled it.
Yeah.
If you take it off the table, somebody will either make a motion for denial or make a motion for approval and not get a second, or some disposition of the issue needs to take place.
I guess my concern was, what, what were the questions from a few weeks ago? I mean, I talked to David about, one of my concerns, and we discussed one small change in language, but is there a greater concern about the number of vehicles? Do we think it's not at all?
That's what I was questioning on, was the number of vehicles.
There's a question of clarity about the paved area, you know, as a percentage of the lot, that kind of thing.
Well, I mean, it's not a widespread problem in town and the complaints that I've gotten is having to put in a rock or gravel driveway in a spot that they've parked for the past 30 years, my house included. I don't, we park off to the side of our driveway from time to time if, depending on one of the other occupants of the house's work schedule. Most of the time, they'll park in a street, but like on trash days, we don't park in a street because of the trash trucks and stuff. I know Brian has one of his vehicles parked in the grass, not just pulled up and parked stupid. I mean, there's a lot of people that have kids that are there, home for college and, you know, an extra car there and, yeah, they park in a grass a certain way. It's just presented a big problem for a lot of people.
The issue is the number of vehicles. I mean, there's a.
Right, but that's still in, that's still in this ordinance, so if we say yea to this ordinance, that becomes an issue.
Well, that's a problem I have with it is, if you go to the property, the problem is, is there are 10 vehicles, nine to 10 vehicles on the property.
Paul, if you do this, you're still going to have 10 vehicles on the property. This does not keep them from keeping 10 vehicles.
That, David?
Yes, it does.
Yes, it does.
It limits the number of vehicles to five or the number of residents.
You can't make something retroactive.
It's not retroactive. You're not going to cite him for having two vehicles yesterday. You're going to have, you're going to cite him for having two vehicles tomorrow.
Also gives him a year to come into compliance.
Run that by me one more time.
So it's not, it's not an ex post facto law. It's, it's a use regulation, so you're, it's with regard to future uses, like future parking of mobile vehicles. So you're not going to cite him for a violation this last month before you pass the ordinance. You're going to cite him or her for violations going forward. I don't think there's any enforcement issues with that.
Okay.
So what is the purpose between, or behind the, or the reasoning, I guess, behind the parking in the grass situation? Is, I mean, that's not an issue with this, this particular property. So was that brought up from someone else, or is that just?
I think it's just a contributing factor to those folks who are already in violation of what would be an ordinance. So it could be taken, any of this could be taken out, changed.
I'm going to enforce the number of vehicles while I'm on the property. You want to walk through that?
I would, I would be a little bit more willing to.
You can park wherever you want, just not more than five vehicles.
I would be a little bit more willing to steer that.
That I don't have a problem with, but the A section of this is, was my biggest.
Then with the amendment, of park wherever the heck you want, but no more than five vehicles. Can we move forward on this?
Why don't you leave it on the table and we'll revise the language.
Copy that.
So we're mostly just concentrating on part C.
Yes.
So we're talking about getting rid of A and B, but going with part C. And I.
Turn this off, or what would, what, once again, what is the purpose of B, 40% paved?
Well, if we're not, if we don't care if they park on the grass or not, D doesn't really matter.
So like Susan said, we'd get rid of A and B and keep C.
But I, I would suggest that we go with the language you emailed us, boat slash trailer. A boat on a trailer counts as one vehicle, not two.
And it was also amended to say five total or one per license.
Yes.
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 Keep that.
Keep that in, please.
Paul, I don't know if you remember this particular property and stuff. What one of the neighbors objected to was, instead of having them out in the open, they moved them back behind a fence where then she can see them.
Well, they're, they're not behind the fence though. They're all.
Well, they were and then they moved them back.
Yeah, well, they moved a fence, but there's one behind it.
They moved all the parts and stuff that he had.
You've got to limit the amount of vehicles.
They moved all that around that.
Right.
That's crazy.
This should take care of it, right?
I think that's going to take care of it.
We'll have two weeks to discuss. I think we need to make it six vehicles.
No, five.
Five.
Well, the argument I got was, like, one of my neighbors, there's three people living there. Each of them have a car, so that's three. They have a boat, that's four, and he's got a motorcycle, that's five. I mean.
Does he garage any of them?
This says vehicles in the front side of the rear yard of the residence. Right.
So they're in a garage.
They're not counted if they're covered. That's the purpose of that verbiage.
Yeah.
That's the same thing I was questioning on when the kids are home.
So five is generous.
Five vehicles.
Five is generous. Five outside of a garage. Right, that's generous.
And you know, these kinds of ordinances.
I like the junkyard.
Applied with problems. 18 years.
It's a junkyard, Brian.
It might be thinking otherwise, because my kids are a baby.
It's a junkyard.
So.
All right.
Then it'll be in set.
We'll table that and do the verbiage and we'll bring it back to them.
The verbiage would, the majority agrees, would be five vehicles and eliminate the A and Bs. Yes, yes.
Never give up.
It was tabled in the past means that it's just giving a table of different things.
Until the next meeting, till it's brought back amended, or how do you?
This is not going to be brought back. As far as I've.
It'd be a different.
It's going to be a different ordinance.
Right.
I would just, in the minutes, I would just, it was discussed and no actions taken. It was just not going to be back on the, they have a new ordinance.
They have jail license.
That'd be the easiest way to do it.
Okay, that takes us to the second reading of bill number 4286, an ordinance amending the City of St. Genevieve Code of Ordinances, Chapter 500, Buildings and Building Regulations, Article 1 in general, Section 500.010, demolition of buildings, permit required in Article 2 Building Code, Section 500.190, construction permit, et cetera, forth below.
A motion to approve.
All in favor?
Aye.
Roll call vote, I'm sorry.
Alderman Smith, Alderman Johnson.
Yes.
Alderman Donovan.
Yes.
Alderman Jokers.
Yes.
Alderman Rainey.
Yes.
Alderman Jones.
Yes.
Alderman Prentz.
Yes.
Alderman Wolfen.
Yes.
Eight yes, zero no's. Bill number 4286 now becomes ordinance 4218.
Thank you. It takes us to the second reading of bill number 4287, an ordinance for the allocation of funds received from the passage of Proposition P as a result of election held on April 2nd, 2019.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call.
Alderman Wolfen.
Yes.
Alderman Prentz.
Yes.
Alderman Jones.
Yes.
Alderman Rainey.
Yes.
Alderman Jokers.
Yes.
Alderman Donovan.
Yes.
Alderman Johnson.
Yes.
Alderman Smith.
Yes.
Eight yes, zero no's. Bill number 4287 now becomes ordinance 4219.
Thank you. It takes us to new business, bill number 4290, an ordinance approving a bid proposal from Sentinel Emergency Solutions, Arno, Missouri, for the purchase of four turn-off gear, the amount not to exceed $8,641.90.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Takes us to bill number 42.
Is there any urgency on that?
No. Regular replacement program.
And recall that our new procedure is that if the second reading is requested, it needs to be notified before the agenda is prepared and called for on the bill.
Takes us to bill number 4291, an ordinance approving a bid proposal for Sentinel Emergency Solutions, Arno, Missouri, for the purchase of four MSA Altair, five gas monitors, the amount not to exceed $7,147.40, amending the rural fire fund budget number 060.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Bill number 4292, an ordinance approving a bid proposal from Huffcamp Comp, Camden, Missouri, for the purchase of one rescue jack, number RJ34PTX, four-point deluxe kit, the amount not to exceed $6,877, and amending the rural fire fund budget of number 060.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Bill number 4293, an ordinance of the City of St. Genevieve authorizing the approval of a proposed contract with more fence for the installation of fence at the water tower located on Progress Parkway, the amount not to exceed $12,500.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Is there any other business? Communication? Need a motion to go into closed session for litigation matters?
Motion to go into closed session.
I'll second that.
All in roll call, please.
Alderman Smith.
Yes.
Alderman Johnson.
Yes.
Alderman Donovan.
Yes.
Alderman Jokers.
Yes.
Alderman Rainey.
Yes.
Alderman Jones.
Yes.
Alderman Prentz.
Yes.
Alderman Wolfen.
Yes.
Motion parrot.
Thank you.